September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the time is now seven P M. I invite you to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Row call. Rudy?
Commissioner Barker.
Here.
Commissioner Begumman.
Here.
Monsieur Cantwell is excused this evening, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Hanchy.
Here.
Chairman Heck.
Here.
Commissioner Cross.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Sixth president, we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval for this evening's agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barker?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the agenda as presented.
Very good. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Row call. Rudy?
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Barker.
Yes.
Commissioner Begumman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchy.
Yes.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Right. There are two public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first is item twenty-one dash four-four-eight, Presentation, Discussion, Public Hearing, and Consideration of Proposed Rezoning P dash twenty-one dash fifty dash MPC, the auction property at Superstition Vista. Request by D R Horton, Inc. to rezone approximately twenty-seven hundred and eighty-three acres from R S G R, that's General Rural Low Density Single Family Detasked Residential, to MPC, Master Plan Community, to facilitate the development of two development units consisting of residential and commercial uses for a maximum of ten thousand nine hundred and forty new residential units and a maximum of four hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred square feet of non-residential development. The auction property is bounded by Elliott Avenue to Ray Avenue and from Meridian Drive to the Idaho Road Alignment.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you could read the other one also, and you could have one public hearing, but we will have separate votes on these items.
Oh, so I could read the second one now?
Yeah, you can combine it into one public hearing. Correct.
All right. Okay. Well, then, let's let us do that. All right. So the second public hearing is item twenty-one dash four-four-nine, Presentation, Discussion, Public Hearing, and Consideration of Proposed Rezoning P dash twenty-one dash fifty-one dash MPC, that's retained property at Superstition Vista. A request by the Arizona State Land Department to rezone approximately fifty-three hundred and seven acres from R S G R to MPC, Master Plan Community, to facilitate the development of six development units consisting of residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Retained property is generally bounded by Baseline Avenue to the Fry Road Alignment and from Meridian Drive to the Central Arizona Project Canal. So we will address the auction property first?
Commissioner, I will be covering both items in my presentation.
Okay.
Commissioner, for the record, my name is Sidney Rice. I'm one of the planners on staff. We cover both the auction and the retained properties noted in the agenda. Just a bit of context of how we got here tonight. The Arizona State Land Department held an auction on November fourth of two thousand and twenty for approximately twenty-eight hundred acres. D R Horton was deemed a successful bidder as part of that award. They were deemed the responsibility to rezone approximately eighty-one hundred acres known as the site. The site is made up, of course, of two parcels, the original twenty-eight hundred acres, and then the remainder of the fifty-three hundred acres known as the retained property. At the time of the auction, portions of the auction property and the retained property were located in Pinal County. D R Horton has requested to annex those portions of those parcels into the city. The annexation process started on December twenty-second of two thousand and twenty. At a later date, D R Horton partnered with Brookfield Residential Properties to develop half of the auction property. The submission and review of the MPC plans started in April of this past year. This exhibit notes the site, as mentioned in the agenda. The site is located and bounded by Baseline to the SR twenty-four and from Meridian to the CAP Canal. The first phase of development is the auction property in the center there with the hatchet gray mark. And then the new annexation limits or the new city limits through the annexation are from Elliott to the SR twenty-four. You may have noticed in your packets that the MPC is different size. The reason for that is because the auction MPC has a development unit plan. Is the second level of the planning effort there is more of a detailed plan. The retained property does not have a development unit plan. Development unit plans will come at a later date when future auctions happen through the Arizona State Land Department. You could really think of the both of these MPC plans as new zoning ordinances that will replace our existing zoning ordinance. So we'll have two separate and two new zoning ordinances for this area of the city. Covers a range of topics, everything from land use budgets to permitted uses to references to master infrastructure plans, development standards, street sections, engineering standards, and everything of the like. Both the development team and city staff sent out approximately nine hundred and fifty neighborhood notices for residents that resided within three hundred feet of the site area. Three neighborhood meetings were held, one on June fourteenth, June twenty-third, and on August fourth empty at the M G C. There's also a virtual meeting held on June sixteenth. Approximately sixty people attended total for all meetings, mostly people on the Mesa side, and questions really consisted of infrastructure improvements, the timing of the SR twenty-four, proposed amenities, home prices, and where other public facilities were to be located. Staff only received one phone call from resident Mesa, and they expressed support for the project, and they asked really when homes are going to be starting to be sold. We have upcoming dates with the City Council. We have a work session on nine-twenty and on ten-four and a consideration of this project, both of these items on your agenda, on ten-five. That is all of my presentation. The applicant is also here and has a presentation as well if you'd like them to give a presentation.
Are there any questions at this point from the commission? I would say no, so let's have the applicant come up, please.
Chair Heck, members of the commission, Patrick Brown, V P of Land with D R Horton. The address is two zero four one zero North Nineteenth Avenue. First, want to thank Sidney for his presentation tonight. We had a work session with the commission on June seventh, and we've been working tirelessly with city staff ever since that date. This is, as we say, this takes an army to bring this future city in front of the commission and future, hopefully in front of the city council for approval. That's what we are doing here tonight, is creating the next city in the East Valley, and it's going to be right here in Apache Junction, which I can't be more thrilled to be a part of. It's probably going to be the highlight of my career, to be honest with you. But there's a lot of people involved in this. This is a team of folks behind you, neighbors that have come to the various different open houses to learn about the project and also get excited. We've received nothing but very big support and just wanting to make sure this still feels very much like Apache Junction. So I think the planning staff and your city staff has made sure that that's paramount in our design and thought process is so that we don't lose what Apache Junction is. So I wanted to let you guys know that as well. With that being said, I've got to take a few seconds just to mainly thank a few folks. The commission for your consideration and hopeful approval tonight, the city staff, Brian, Matt, Joel. They've been working very tirelessly on a number of complicated development agreements with the Water District, the Sewer District, C F Ds. So there's been a number of documents going back and forth. Larry, as development director, he's been pushing us every step of the way, as well as Sidney. I don't know if anyone's slept less than Sidney over the past few months as he's tirelessly made sure that every single dot is cross, dot is I is dotted, T is crossed. And even today, we had a last-second change that just that to make sure that it's perfect. So we appreciate his thoroughness. Rudy, Liz, Leslie, Emile, Mike Weaver, Mike Loggins in the Water District, and Darren England in the Sewer District. They've all been amazing partners and couldn't have asked for a better team. I also want to thank our two other main partners. The first is the state of Arizona. This is a unique auction that we've mentioned to you guys about in our work session is the state of Arizona, the land department, is our partners. They're our partners in the deal. They're our partners with the future retained property. That'll be exciting stuff for Apache Junction for various employments and future growth in years to come. So they've been amazing. Mark Edelman has led the charge for them, Jim Perry, who's the deputy director, and Lisa Atkins. Without her support, we wouldn't be here today. And last but not least, I've got to thank our friends over at Brookfield Residential. They've been amazing. John Bradley, Dee, Bob, Eric, they've got a world-class team, and they're one of the best in the business. What they're doing is creating places and Karen Taylor Robson, who's helped shepherd this the whole way. We wouldn't be here if they didn't work tirelessly with the state land department to create a unique opportunity for the state to partner with a world-class developer like D R Horton and Brookfield Residential to make sure that we're not here just to show pretty pictures, but to actually get the city built. So we do have a presentation. It's the same one that you've seen before. Happy to run through it really quick for a refresher and for the neighbors here, if you would give such a pleasure. Andy Barron, who we also have to thank, who's created these documents and this zoning. And so I'll turn it over to him, but appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm sure you remember me, Andy Barron with A B L A. My address for the record is three-ten East Rio Salado Parkway, Tempe, eight-five-two-eight-one. So I will go through this a little bit quicker than the last time, unless you all have some questions along the way. Please feel free to interrupt me. But for those in the audience that aren't familiar, I'll start with the slide that's up. So Superstition Vista is approximately two hundred and seventy-five square miles of property, which is all held in state trust land. If you think about that, it's great to say it's comparable in size to the city of Mesa, Chandler, and Tempe, and Gilbert combined. It's a significant land area. Also important to note, Mark Edelman's been great in making sure that we say this over and over again, but this is state trust land. It is not, you know, B L M or private property. This is held in trust, obviously, to benefit mostly primary schools, but other trust beneficiaries within the state. And certainly, the development of a project of this scale has significant impact for the state itself. Important to note that this project, obviously, been underway and, you know, in development and design for about fifteen years now, fifteen to twenty years, and it takes an army. Many of these slides you'll see are all the different various organizations that have been involved through the way. Obviously, a lot of Apache Junction, the Sewer District, Water District, Fire District, the Unified School District, and certainly U L I, Pinal Partnership, East Valley Partnership, S R P, just to name a few. These are significant, significant holdings with a significant amount of interest in the area. So large-scale, as you can see, within Superstition Vista's, and this mouse does work. Sidney, how do I go to full? Is that this button? Here we go. I got it. This works. So again, the boundary of Superstition Vista, as you can see, is kind of that black line on the outside. The property that we're talking about today is the first portion of that, sort of at that northeast corner or northwest corner. Patrick has kind of already introduced the developers of the team, so D R Horton and Brookfield. Obviously, behind that, I'm just a small part of that team that's actually been working, as Patrick said, tirelessly to bring forward this very complex but very comprehensive package that you have in front of you this evening, which is just a portion. Obviously, there's master studies behind it as well and other materials, as Patrick had indicated, with the other agreements. D R Horton, America's builder, I don't think they need much introduction there, significant master developer, significant home builder in the United States, proper, done very significant projects throughout Arizona as well. And Brookfield Residential, again, a significant master plan developer in all of North America with significant global holdings across the world in terms of asset management, development, and soon to be residential housing building here, even in Arizona. So as we jump into this, we'll talk both properties, much like Sidney did. We'll talk auction property and retained property. So the local context, I think we all understand the area at this point. North of the planned SR twenty-four, south of Baseline Avenue, east of Meridian, and west of the C A P Canal. The two colors there, we'll get into in a second. As Sidney had indicated, the site, approximately eight thousand ninety acres. We'll call it eighty-one hundred acres to keep the math easy, kind of outlined in the orange there. The auction property is the middle of that space, about twenty-seven hundred and eighty-three acres. And then the remainder property, thoughtfully named the retained property, at fifty-three hundred and seven acres. So together, that equals the eight thousand ninety. With the developer obligation and the participation agreement, D R Horton is responsible for the entitlements of that. So that is partly the annexation, the development agreements, the master plan zoning, and then the formation of the C F D districts that were mentioned previously. As it is planned at the moment here, D R Horton is on the west side of Ironwood, and Brookfield is on the east side of Ironwood. Respectively, the acreages are divided generally in half. We have in this a land use plan, and this is actually in the MPC documents. I think this may be slightly different than what we showed you last time. This is part of the back and forth that we worked hand and glove with staff to provide that level of detail. And this generally shows the location of residential, generally shows the location of parks networks, street networks, potential for commercial. And similarly, on the Brookfield residential side, you'll see the same general locations of planned facilities. And each of us are well underway and through the pre-plating process based on these concepts. With that, in order for us to regulate this, we have a land use budget. And the land use budget allocates residential density and non-residential intensity between each development unit. The ten thousand nine hundred and forty units that were allocated are divided equally between each development unit. And likewise, the commercial non-residential gross floor area is divided equally between the two land areas. With that, the master plan, community plan lays out a framework that talks about the development units and how the land use budget is allocated, what the permitted uses are within each of those, and then breaks down the development unit plan in more detail that gets into the elements of transportation, trails, parks, networks, and then in even further detail, the development standards and design guidelines relative to architecture, landscape, walls, fencing, things of that nature. So that's that extra layer of detail that Sidney had mentioned early in the presentation. So with that, these are graphics that are from the MPCs themselves that start to show the elements that are planned and fixed at this point, collector alignments, arterial alignments that are specific to trails, general kind of thought process on open space and how that might be allocated throughout with some major trail corridors identified, and obviously, transportation framework that's based on the traffic impact analysis. With that, everything has to be supported by master studies. So the ten thousand nine hundred and forty units and the four hundred and forty-three thousand square feet of non-residential gross floor area is supported by these master studies. So to do that, we have a master water plan. This also supports the development proposed within the retained property. So all of the master studies not only cover the auction property, but the retained in totality. So you'll see there's a wastewater master plan, a non-potable water master plan, a drainage master plan that all sort of support the proposed development. As we get into the retained property, again, location, kind of the horseshoe out of the middle there would be the auction, the retained portion being the fifty-three hundred acres. That is divided up into its own separate development units. Starting on the south, development units one and two stay in sequence, and then three starts here, and then goes kind of counterclockwise around to development unit eight. In that, there are, again, land use budgets. I won't go through that level of detail here and explain each one, but logically, they are allocated based on transition and land use. So as we get closer to the freeway, we get more intense with density of residential, more intense with intensity of non-residential gross floor area. And similarly, as we go to the north in the land use plan, you'll see that the allocation of non-residential gross floor area for those things that may be more complementary to industrial development, non-residential office, things of that nature would happen further to the north. So this land use plan was also added to the retained property MPC. In that very similar structure, in the sense that we have the MPC plan that regulates us through land use budget, development units, and permitted uses, the development unit plan here is actually a framework. So that framework tells a future planner like myself, as they buy a piece of property from the state, what they have to provide is in a level of detail to ensure that there's enough criteria established for proper development within that development unit itself. So that framework is outlined in detail through a narrative that then provides that criteria for them to develop that information. One of the big elements within the documents that you've probably seen is all of the different practices we're implementing for sustainability. And you'll see that through the one water concepts in the master studies. You'll see that through our stormwater management policies that we have integrated into the MPCs themselves, trails and open space, major significant place-making elements. All of those things have been integrated. The goal here is to create, you know, the first project of Superstition Vista, setting the bar for future development along the way. Obviously, and again, this is from the previous presentation, some character of what we're looking at from a landscape perspective, understanding that water is a valuable asset in the market, that where we have turf elements, that we're using them for park and program, and we're using that landscape to create place, shade, and character within the communities. And then, obviously, parks networks are important for us within the neighborhoods to make sure that there's a quality of life for residents, that they have active recreation components accessible within their neighborhoods. So I did go through that very fast. That is the last slide. I think last time I probably took about forty-five minutes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. So feel free.
Questions from the commission?
Comment.
Comment. Commissioner Barker?
Yes, I am absolutely awed by the work that city staff, you folks, have put into this project. When it first began and we got that first copy, and there were all these things in there, and all of us said, what about this? See, this is part of us, this is a city policy. You're saying maybe. No, we want yes. And you've gone back through all of that, and you have brought it up to the level that we were looking for. And I applaud that effort. And I applaud that effort. I'm in awe.
Chairman, Commissioner Barker, again, team effort, and I have to, again, acknowledge Larry's team and staff in general for everything. It's been a highly collaborative exercise that we fully acknowledge is a lot of back and forth to kind of get to a place where we have something that we all feel very comfortable with and very proud of to move forward with.
I think I need to add just one more thing. Patrick, when you were speaking, you talked of creating a city. You quickly changed that, and I commend you for the quick change. This is not the creation of a new city. This is in addition to a city that exists and will enhance that existing city. Thank you.
It's a lot of pressure up here. There's a lot of people staring at us. You have to understand that.
At least I'm not on the council anymore telling you those things.
Well, thank you very much for your comments.
Andy, I guess I have one comment. I had a conversation earlier with Sidney, and I asked the question how well D.R. Horton and Brookfield were working together. I know these are two big players, and you often wonder sometimes, can the two big players work together and make it happen? And he said that you guys have been very good, and I appreciate that. For the, in the best interest of the city, I am grateful that you're able to work together to make this a, you know, extraordinary project. So, thank you to all.
I'd say you got two of the best, and I've been doing this for twenty-seven years. So, this is significant.
Thank you. Thank you. There are no other questions. This is an open hearing. I'll actually do it on both of the, both the auction property and the retained property. Members of the public have the opportunity to speak on these two cases. Clarify, statements from the public must be related to this case and this case only. When recognized by the chair, please come down to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then present your statement. Please make certain to speak into the microphone, and you would have a five-minute time limit for each speaker. So, do I have any individuals who would like to make comments? I think I saw a hand back there. Please come on down.
My name is Tanya Holland. I'm with Providence Homes on Signal Butte and Elliott. How are you guys doing tonight?
Well, thank you.
We got smiles from everybody. Okay, so I have a question. Okay, so let me just tell you where I live, so you know exactly where I am. Okay, so you have Signal Butte and Elliott, and then I bump up against Meridian. You know where Meridian is, right? I've lived there for nineteen years. So, right there on Meridian is that state trust land. That is what's being developed right now, correct? And so, how many developments are going to be there? Like, is there going to be a lot of developments like Meritage, like Richmond American? Is that what they're trying to do, kind of like they've done with Eastmark? Is that the same type of deal that you're trying to create? Is that what it is?
We're not able to answer that question.
Yeah, if you could direct your comments and they can answer after everybody has made comments.
Oh, okay, so we're not doing questions, just comments right now?
Right. You can ask a question, but we cannot answer it at this point. We can, later on, we could bring the applicant back up.
Oh, okay, and then we can ask for questions then?
Or, no, well, you can ask a question now, and then they will, we will ask them to come back up and provide a response.
Okay, so just tell me a little bit more, when you do come back up here, what it's going to look like? How many developments? How many parks, you know? How many residents, do you think? How many homes? I know you don't know how many residents, but just a little bit more detail. And that would be great.
One last thing, can you just, I don't believe you gave us your address.
One, you ready?
I'm ready.
Here we go.
I'm not going to write it down. We'll get it all.
Oh, you're not going to write it down? Okay. It's 11504 East Rutledge Avenue, R-U-T-L-E-D-G-E, Mesa, Arizona, 85212.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, please, come on down.
My name is Scott Bergman. I reside at 4944 South Calderon in Mesa. My property is within the 300-foot notification limit. I have a couple of questions for the developer, especially because this land will be immediately adjacent to our property. So, if I remember correctly, all of Meridian or Meridian Road is split in half. Half of it is Penal County and half of it is Maricopa County, if I remember correctly. If that is the case, then I'd like to know how the developer plans to manage or mitigate the traffic flow on the east side of Meridian. Does he have a plan to work with the city of Mesa and Maricopa County for the west side of Meridian? And if so, what do those easements, improvements in D-cell lanes actually look like? Is there a plan to close Meridian for a while? The other questions I'd like to ask are, what streets will penetrate from Meridian to the east? Specifically, Elliott, Warner, and Ray. What do those look like? The other part to that, too, is right now in Penal County, the land, the swales and the drainage on that land are very unfavorable to Maricopa County. And when it rains hard, like it just did a couple of months ago, we're the recipient of a whole lot of mud and water that comes from that state trust land right across into our property, which is the Providence area, that's immediately to the west. So, I'd like to know how the developer plans to mitigate or self-contain those runoff waters, especially because the area that's being proposed for first construction is the area immediately adjacent to our property. Because the presentation was kind of quick, also immediately adjacent, so in this area, the auctioned area, the, we're talking about master plan communities, so we're probably talking about a slightly higher density of living than single-family detached homes. These are probably detached homes that I think her point are probably more like Eastmark. So, I'd like to get a feel for in that area of Elliott to Ray, what are we talking about? Are we talking about commercial properties that will abut Meridian? I don't think that's what we're talking about based on the presentation, but I'd like to know. And I'd also like to know those, the MPCs appear to be a higher density living, so what is his plan? The property immediately west of Meridian is, those houses are of a significant size and of a significant value. And so, I am concerned, I don't care if the property gets more dense and smaller as it moves to the east, but I would be concerned if it immediately abuts Meridian with homes that are many thousands of square feet immediately to the west. So, I'd like the developer to answer those when he comes back up.
Very good, okay.
That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wish to make comment? Please come on down. You'll have to, one at a time, please, yeah.
My name is Penny Nielsen. My address is 21626 East Caldwell's Way, Queen Creek, Arizona, 85214. I own property, the industrial property off of Penal Drive in Guadalupe. And I'm curious to know if it's going to stay Penal County, if my taxes will go up. I'm curious to know if we'll have access to city water and city sewer. I'm just curious to know if it's going to affect that because it's industrial at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please. No, sorry. The other person that was, yeah, who wish to come up? Excuse me, ma'am, do you, do you wish to speak then, too, or?
No, I just wish to.
Oh, fine, okay, very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, if that's the case, I need to close this.
Ask one more time.
Pardon?
Ask one more time, since we doubled the hearing.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
Anyone else, anyone else wish to give comment to these two cases for this evening? Well, okay.
My name is Holly Rowley. I'm at 11536 East Sheridan Avenue, Mesa, 85212. So, we're kind of going to be sandwiched between this and Eastmark. And a big concern, a big complaint that I've heard is we don't have a lot of shopping in the area. Eastmark put in all of these homes and very little shopping. So, just curious as to what the plans are shopping-wise and commercial versus the ratio of commercial to residential.
Thank you. Ken, is there anyone else that wishes to give comment? Okay, with that being said, I will, I will close the public hearing, and I guess then I will reopen the public hearing to have our applicant, to have representatives come up. And I, I'm hoping that you wrote down some of those questions, because...
I have, yeah. Do my best.
Okay.
Some of them are fairly detailed questions, so let me...
Andy, you want me to do the full screen for you, or?
You know, Larry, I didn't know you could drive from there. That's pretty impressive. All right. Cooking with gasoline. All right, so let me hit this, let's use this graphic. So, one of the questions was about the industrial property, whether or not that would be in Penal County still. Just to be clear, the only property that we're annexing is the property that is in yellow and in orange. So, if that's existing property that is already within the county, that will remain within the county. So, there will be no changes to that property. I think that answers that question. With respect to the number of developments, so let's kind of go through, I'm going to have to scroll quickly. One of the questions was, how many developments will be here? Is it Meritage? Is it KB? Is it D.R. Horton? So, D.R. Horton is developing generally Development Unit One. Is there potential that they may sell to another builder? There's potential, but Brookfield Residential typically does do land development and sells to multiple builders. So, there is, you know, definitely going to be multiple builders within this area proper. And I think I want to make sure that that's clear, is that between the two development units, we will have multiple home builders. I don't know exactly how to answer the question of how many developments, because essentially, what we're looking at is 2,800 acres of a mix of housing and non-residential uses. So, the number of developments is, in context, correlated to the types of products that will be developed. So, it will be residential and with some level of commercial. With respect to the number of parks planned and how that's done, I think what I can do is show you on this graphic that in the Brookfield portion, these circles represent areas that could have parks. The smaller circles also represent areas that could be parks. There's also a linear park planned in this location as well. And where you see the same concept on this plan, every little green circle, we're pretty far along on this. This is generally what we're building. There'll be parks in these locations, larger facilities here, you know, and these benefit the residents within this neighborhood. So, at the same time, I'm going to answer the question about the retail. There is commercial planned within this property at the intersection of Ironwood and Ray, potentially at the intersection of Elliott and Ironwood. And similarly, on the opposite side, Brookfield has similar plans. What that looks like, it's market-driven, depends on demand. You know, 443,000 square feet of floor area could translate into, you know, roughly 40 acres. It depends on FAR. That's something that we won't know until there's a site plan developed. What those services are, again, is really based on the market and the demand. Ironwood's a highly traveled roadway with a whole lot of trips planned per day, connecting north and south between the US-60 and the SR-24. I think I could paint a picture there that there's probably some demand for some retail. But I believe that that will happen. It's just a question of timing. With respect to question on what's going to happen overall in the development, between the two properties, the retained and the auction is probably isn't the best graphic, but it's the quickest one I can see, there is roughly 27,000 units planned in residential. And those will generally occur, you know, basically from this area all the way around to the south down to the SR-24. And there's also about nine and a half million square feet of non-residential gross floor area planned. So, that could be translated into commercial, could be translated into office or employment, industrial, or other types of non-residential uses. And that will be based on future development unit plans that would come through based on the retained property auctions in the future. With respect to roadways, let me see if I can find a better graphic. Oh, this is a good one. With respect to Meridian Road, obviously, the gentleman was correct. We do have two municipalities. We will be improving the half-street of Meridian Road to the east based on our traffic impact analysis. So, that existing street would be improved to a four-lane arterial. The TIA will address further improvements based on the impacts of development through the retained property in the future. Elliott and Ray would be improved to six-lane arterials. Again, this development, specifically the auction property, would be responsible for half-street improvements. So, from the section line to the north, Ray Road would be improved, half of the full build-out. Similarly, with Elliott, ultimately, when that occurs. Maybe the only difference here would be Ironwood, since both properties border that, that would be fully improved as development occurs all the way up to Elliott. So, I believe that answers the questions on the traffic drainage. The good news is, because we are doing a two-hour, 100-year storm event retention, and our drainage master plan shows this, any of the downstream flows, we'll be retaining all of that stuff on our property. So, as the development occurs, all the issues that the gentleman was speaking of would be negated. That's going to be as a result of us doing improvements on the property itself. And with respect to housing, the density, those items are really kind of a broad brush. As you all know, if you've read the MPC, the different types of products that we're permitted to do range from an attached housing all the way up to a large lot. And that really is a function of, you know, the master plan itself and the type of demand and housing that's needed for the area. So, that density has blended over the entire property, is about 4.8 units per acre, I believe, on the auction property, and it varies on the development of the retained property based on its adjacency to freeway corridors or other transitions in land use. So, the density will vary based on the type of housing that is planned for the area. So, I believe I got everything, Joel, I think. Let me know if I, if you feel I missed something, or if you want some more explanation, I'm happy to jump into that. I think you're good.
I had a question.
Sure. Right, yes.
It's not going to impact any of the county island with water, because they're not part of the city and the way the utilities are set up. Everything, from what I could see, goes around that property, so therefore, it won't change.
Correct. Water and sewer stays as it is. The only property taxes, I mean, we're not changing it. We can't annex property that we don't own, so.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Because they were asking if it would bring any additional water service to that county island, and it really won't.
That's correct. And it would be quite some time.
Unless they become annexed.
Unless they want to annex in, and that will be up to the people who live on that property.
Sure, and keep in mind, too, that it's really undetermined at this point at what development unit and when the state would auction another property. So, if I was a betting man, I would imagine the stuff on the SR-24 would probably be first, so. I would imagine we'd probably see something there sooner than we would further to the north.
Any other questions from the commission?
I got another question. We don't have any slides for the roads that you've proposed, how they're going to look?
Not in this particular presentation, just within the MPC.
Maybe you could show the public after the meeting or something, kind of give them a better idea of how they're actually going to look, since we have an unfair advantage over the public. We got a thick book with all the details and everything in it, so you have to see a lot more.
You have 600 pages of lots of information, yes. Yeah, typically, we don't get to that level of detail on presentations, because it gets fairly complicated to see on a screen, so.
I was just asking.
Fair, yes.
And I think it's also worthy noting that you have shown so many of those specific slides, the one that he's asking about at past meetings.
We have.
So, this is not something that we just walked in... So, this is not something that we just walked in, got a book, and said, "Oh, yeah, okay." I mean, we've been at this since April, so...
Yes, that information was part of our public outreach at all of our neighborhood meetings and open houses.
And I have the previous draft that we had before this. And we even had a raw version before this, so...
You guys have seen all the blood, sweat, and tears.
Right. I just want the public to know that this has been looked at quite thoroughly, not only by us, but staff way more and you guys way more than us, so...
Sidney, both of these books are online on our website, correct?
Okay. Oh, okay, even better.
So, I can show when we're done here, if people find tonight's agenda. Just like the upcoming meetings, these all are attached on the city public website.
Good, that's helpful. Thank you. All right. So, any other questions from the commission? If not, thank you, Andy. So, again, this is still a public hearing. So, if we have anyone else that wishes to... You can't answer. I guess you have to wait and see.
I think you already closed the floor, so...
Well, Mr. Chair, this is an important decision. So, of course, you may want to reopen the public hearing in case anybody else has any questions as a result of the responses. I would recommend that you do that.
I thought it was still open. I thought the public hearing was still open.
Well, I'm saying you can ask the public to speak again if you'd like.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, so I will open up again now for the public if anyone wishes to give comment. All right, I will... I'll offer up one more time. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Do I need to state my name again?
Yeah, please.
Oh, snap. Okay. Tonya Holland, 11504 East Rutledge Avenue, Mesa, Arizona, 85212. Okay. So, this is 8,100 acres of land, correct? I'm not allowed to ask them, right? Oh, snap. Okay. I wanted to ask also about the freeway. Now, as I understand it, Meridian, if you go south past Warner, it will connect to the 24. I need to know exactly where the freeway, the roads are going to go because literally... I'm really hoping to have grandchildren soon. And that is a major road right there. And Meridian is super close to my house, so I kind of want to know where those major freeways are going to go and how close they're going to be. I just want to make sure, too. He said that he thought possibly 27,000 units, 8,100 acres. And commercial, not so sure about how much commercial property will be there, too. So, those are my questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to give comment? One more time, I'll ask anyone else who wished to give comment. All right, so I'll close the public hearing, and then I will...
So, can we just answer those questions without having Andy come up and then have another public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess let's...
So, there is a... So, the Arizona State Department of Transportation has a webpage for the State Route 24 project. So, there is an interchange, future interchange, at Meridian and the 24. So, I think that answers that question. Commercial, I think Andy showed the site. I believe the first MPC 1 and 2 has about 40 acres of commercial located in Ironwood and Ray. And then the grandchildren question, I can't answer that one. And... But there will be much more commercial. I think, as that table indicated, about over time, 27,000 housing units on the 8,000 acres, industrial really north around the existing county island closer to baseline. And then mostly housing. I think the other gentleman had a question along Meridian. In this particular 2,700 acres, there's really no commercial along Meridian at all. I don't know if I missed anything, Joel, from your notes.
Okay.
Larry? Meridian isn't changing. We're just improving the east side.
Well, we are working with Mesa. Mesa has a plan, a long-range transportation plan as well. So, Meridian will be improved. There will be an eventual connection to the 60.
Right. But I'm saying as of right, what this deals with...
This developer will be working on the east half of Meridian. And ultimately, when all this land gets auctioned and developed, there will be then a connection and a realignment, if you will, of Meridian. So, it connects with the 60 with the interchange. So, again, that's two counties and two cities in ADOT all working together ultimately.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
Down here.
I'm sorry.
My understanding, too, is regarding commercial-industrial, there's in the neighborhood of 9 million square feet of available property for commercial and/or industrial uses. So, that's a substantial amount of square footage. That's a substantial amount of property that can be developed. So, that's really encouraging.
And again, just for everyone's reference, on the agenda, if you go to the city's webpage and you go to the section on government and then agendas and minutes, you can click on these on the agenda for tonight. And those are the items related to the auction parcel and the retained property, the other 5,000 acres roughly. That is that thinner document that... So, all these documents are available online right now, as of last Thursday, really.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the commission? All right, then we will proceed to look for a motion. Before that, however, we do have to review the findings of fact. Joel, I presume we have to take each case individually. We're not going to vote on them at all.
Yeah, you vote on them separately. And you go through a process. I don't think it has to be as detailed as the CUP findings, but it's at your discretion.
Very good. All right, so then we will look first at the findings of fact for the first case, which is the auction property.
I don't think so.
Do you need to see?
No, I got it right here. This is the auction problem. As required by the City Apache Junction zoning ordinance, a master plan community request may be approved by the city council after consideration has been given to the criteria outlined below. Point one, the development proposed is in conformance with the general plan. Applicant response to the City of Apache Junction General Plan Land Use Map has designated the auction property as master plan community, max 20 development units per acre. This area was designated as master plan community to provide general guidance for the development of vacant state trust land. Master plan community designation ensures that variety of uses are planned and developed in comprehensive manner to facilitate a high quality of life in vibrant local community in conformance with the general plan policies. Do we agree?
Agreed. And I don't think we have to read every...
Right. Number two, the streets and thoroughfares proposed are in harmony in conformance with the general plan. Do we agree?
Objections?
Nope.
The proposed development will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area.
Agree. Any objections? Nope.
The conceptual site locations proposed for the public facilities, such as schools, fire protection, law enforcement, water, wastewater, streets, public services, and parks, are adequate to serve the anticipated population within the MPC district.
Agree. Objection? Nope. I'll look for a motion, please.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Apache Junction City Council the approval of MPC rezoning request, case P-21-50-MPC, a request by Patrick Brown of DR Horton, owner and applicant, to facilitate the construction of a maximum of 10,940 new residential units and a maximum of 443,400 square feet of non-residential development for the property known as the auction property, which is generally bounded by Elliott Avenue on the north, Ray Avenue on the south, and from Meridian Drive on the west to Idaho Road alignment on the east. From RS-GR, general rural low-density, single-family detached residential, to MPC master plan community subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the auction property shall be developed in accordance with the MPC development unit plan, infrastructure master plans, and the corresponding development agreement. Two, street improvements include, but are not necessarily limited to, the construction of new streets and street networks, extension of pavement, and provision of sidewalks, curb gutter, traffic signals, street lights, underground utilities, fire hydrants, landscaping, and shall be required as part of this planned development project and subject to review and approval by the city engineer. Three, all applicable permits shall be applied for and plans shall be designed to current city codes. Inclusively, all applicable development fees shall be paid at the time of permit issuance. Four, all common areas, amenity areas, and tracks within and immediately adjacent to the proposed development, including perimeter walls and fences, and interior and exterior common area landscaping, shall be owned and maintained in good conditions at all time by the Homeowners Association. Five, the developer's engineer shall meet the Civil Engineering Improvement Plans and Document Requirements as outlined in the MPC plan and in accordance with the city's approved engineering standards that are in effect at the time of the plan's submittal.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second. Roll call, Rudy.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchi?
Yes.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. This will move on to the city council with a recommendation of approval with all conditions as stated.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and then we will consider the second case here, the retained property and the findings of fact.
Chair? As required by the Apache Junction zoning ordinance, a master plan community request may be approved by the city council after consideration has been given to the criteria outlined below. Number one, the development process is in conformance with the general plan. Do we agree? Any concerns?
Agree.
Nope.
Number two, streets and thoroughfares proposed are in harmony and conformance with the general plan. Do we agree? Number three, the proposed development will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. Do we agree?
Yep.
Number four, the conceptual site locations proposed for the public facilities, such as schools, fire protection, law enforcement, water, wastewater, streets, public services, and parks, are adequate to serve the anticipated population within the MPC district.
Objection?
That's it.
Very good, thank you. So, we've covered the findings of fact, so I look for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barker.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Apache Junction City Council the approval of the retained property MPC rezoning request, case P-21-51-MPC, a request by Arizona State Land Department, owner and applicant, to facilitate the future development of six development units known as the retained property, generally bounded by Baseline Avenue to the Fry Road alignment and from Meridian Drive to the Central Arizona Project Canal, from RS-GR, general rural low-density, single-family detached residential, to MPC master plan community subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the auction property shall be developed in accordance with the MPC future development unit plans, infrastructure master plans, and the corresponding development agreement. Two, street improvements include, but not necessarily limited to, the construction of new streets, the street networks, extension of pavement, and the provision of sidewalks, curb gutter, traffic signals, street lights, underground utilities, fire hydrants, landscaping, and shall be required as part of this planned development project and subject to review and approval by the city engineer. Three, all applicable permits shall be applied for and plans shall be designed to current city codes. Inclusively, all applicable development fees shall be paid at the time of permit's issuance. Four, all common areas, amenity areas, and tracks within and immediately adjacent to the proposed development, including perimeter walls and fences, and interior and exterior common area landscape shall be owned and maintained in good condition at all time by the Homeowners Association. Five, the developer's engineer shall meet with the Civil Engineer Improvement Plan and Document Requirements as outlined in the MPC plan and in accordance with the city's approved engineering standards that are in effect at the time of the plan's submittal.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chair? If we could change the condition number one. It says the auction property. It should say the retained property.
Ah, the retained property.
So, that's a typo on our part.
Sorry, I didn't catch it.
Thank you. Second. So, we have a motion with that correction to item number or to condition number one. So, we have a motion and a second. Second, we have a second. Roll call, Rudy.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchi?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. This will also move on to council with a recommendation of approval.
Very good, thank you. Okay. At this point, we have old business. Is there any old business? I don't believe so. There's no old business scheduled, new business? I don't think we have any new business scheduled either. Information and reports? The chair has no informational reports for the commission this evening. Director's report?
Rudy has about a two-hour report, if you're guys are... All right. We don't have anything tonight. I think this was enough for tonight.
Very good. Okay. All right, then, lastly, selection of meeting dates, times, locations, and purpose.
Chair? I move the Planning and Zoning Commission hold regular meeting on September 28 at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard. In the event there is no items to be brought forward to the commission, this meeting may be canceled. Notification of cancellation properly posted and the commission notified by staff.
Second.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, I have a second. Roll call, Rudy.
Vice Chair Hanchi?
Yes.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begman?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Motion passed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.